Good evening. I'd like to call order the Board of Supervisor meeting for the Town of Delafield for Tuesday, October 28th. Prior to our meeting, there's a public hearing for the 2026 proposed budget. Notice of this public hearing was posted on October 8th, 2025, in accordance with Wisconsin State statutes. Purpose of this hearing is to receive public comments on the proposed 2026 town budget, including the proposed tax levy and related financial plans. Final budget approval by the Town Board is scheduled for our November 11th, 2025 meeting. Is anybody here who'd like to speak for the public hearing for the budget? Seeing nobody here to speak on the budget public hearing, I'm going to close that public hearing, and if you'd please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd please call the roll, that'd be great.
Supervisor Mahoney Ogden.
Present.
Supervisor Miller.
Present.
Supervisor Wolfley.
Present.
Supervisor Berkowitz.
Present.
Chairman Kranick.
Present.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, item five, citizens' comments. Public comments from citizens regarding items on or not on the agenda. The board may not engage in discussions with the citizens making the comments. Individual presentations are limited to three minutes, and citizens shall follow the rules set forth in section 2.04, par. 1, par. D of the town code. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm absolutely stunned. Nobody is here. And that just, that's what I want to talk about tonight, too. One of, the main thing was this virtual meeting attendance item. I'm pleased to see that common sense prevailed. And you said that, you know, it isn't fair. It isn't democratic. Towns, and particularly this town, and I know whereof I speak, Ed knows my history, we've prided ourselves on presenting the most democratic form of governance. We rely on citizen participation to ensure that the will and concerns of the people, as well as the discussions and actions of the boards and the commissions that represent the citizens, are heard and understood. Virtual meetings would eliminate the timeliness of the citizen input. Tonight's budget hearing and the annual town meeting are prime examples of the right citizens have in participating and providing for the welfare of the community. Where is everybody? We used to pack them in. I'm, you know, I regret that more people are not prompted to accept responsibility for their community, for their neighborhoods. We have seen fewer and fewer individuals willing to expend time and energy to volunteer in all areas of society, not just governance. I'm here to chastise the complacent and self-interested among us. Having served as a chief election inspector, land commissioner, and town board member, I can say that there is very little to match the satisfaction of a job well done. I applaud our present officials for their willingness to face the slings and arrows, and there are many that sometimes accompany your positions. Thanks for letting me vent.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Seeing there are no other citizens in the audience, I'm going to close the citizens' comments period and move to item six, which would be approval of the October 13th, 2025 special town board minutes.
Motion to approve minutes from October 13th, 2025.
A second.
Motion is second to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion passes 5-0. Next item, item seven, approval of vouchers. I look for a motion to approve accounts payable and payroll.
Motion to approve payroll check register dated October 24th, 2025, in the amount of $16,537.42. And check register dated October 28th, 2025, for checks 689010 through 69029, in the amount of $39,892.86.
Second. Motion, seconds on the table, to approve accounts payable and payroll. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close. Motion passes 5-0. Next item, item eight, communications for discussion of possible action. October budget to actuals, which were in our packet. Anybody's got any questions, or if there's any color that you wish to add?
There's nothing out of the ordinary right now. We're still right on track. Oh, thank you.
Wonderful.
And the only other communication I have is an update on the Highway 83 project. There's, there's some supplier delays and some issues with the pedestals and bolts and things that they need to energize the lights at Cardinal and Oakwood. So they're hoping in the next week and a half, two weeks, to get that open. I was on the weekly call with them, and I expressed to them our frustration that they were unable to meet the deadline that they've had all summer to get this done. And I brought it early on, that they need to make sure that they have these pedestals and things.
They just found out with two weeks to go, they didn't have it.
Yeah, and I brought it up early on because that was the issue when they redid Capital Drive last year, too, so.
They did, I was through there about an hour ago, and they have the lights on and the road markings down at 83 and Gulf, which is nice, but obviously not all the way through.
Next item, item nine, unfinished business. 27, 26 proposed budget updates.
So during our last meeting for the budget workshop, Supervisor Wolfley brought up a good point about one of the roads, Crooked Creek, potentially not being done. I was able to get ahold of the contractor, and their timeline was too close for comfort, in my opinion, so we did take that road out and put two additional roads in. I did hand out a confidential list of two additional roads to be placed on. There was Tolbert and I think Summer, Summerhill?
Cushing Park.
I'm sorry, Cushing Park. The amount came to 878, so I didn't change the budget at all. Because if we do a couple of these, apparently as like a package deal, you get a better price instead of doing them individually. So I didn't want to change it currently to see what we would get. If it's too high over the amount that we want, we'll not do Tolbert Lane this year. And then I'll end up doing a reduction in the budget and bring that to you guys probably sometime in early March. But with no plans to go over the 875 that we had previously talked about.
Are we looking for some discussion on that, or what's the?
It's just FYI, if you guys have any other budget things that you'd like me to bring to the next meeting.
The next meeting would be the approval. I can make the changes between now and then. Otherwise, that's the only update I have right now.
No, I mean, I think that's, as long as we're keeping it around where the same numbers are, we have a little more wood clarity on what we're expecting from the fire department and
Right.
So I think those are kind of the few pieces we're hanging out there, right?
Yep, correct.
And as I recall from our last meeting, the mill rate was going down something like 34, 35% from?
Yeah, it's very significant, actually.
To 1.15, correct.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly.
1.15, yep, per thousand.
Cool. Well, those are the updates on the budget. We'll plan on approving that at our next meeting on the 11th. Next item, unfinished business. The 2025, 2026 resident survey.
So we did talk a little bit about this when we were working on the park survey. I do have, like, an example out there. I did include it in the information that I gave you. I'm just looking to see if you want any other questions on there? If you want me to help word any of them in such a way that they're not leading? Do you think some of these questions are too much? What's going to end up happening is there will be part of the, like, I don't want to call it a newsletter, but the insert for the tax bill is going to have residents go to do this survey as soon as the bills go out, which is roughly, you know, December 12th-ish. So I want to make sure that we have the survey buttoned up before then.
And we'll promote it besides the tax insert.
Absolutely, mhm.
I know I had already talked with you a chunk about it, and just in continuing to look at it, I think that we also just need to add on there about that the paper copies will be available. I know, we know that, but maybe put it in there, too, just to add that on there for someone who doesn't want to take it digitally. In terms of the questions, I think the first two, they're fine. I don't necessarily, I mean, if we're ending up needing to, like, create space for any reason, those are the only two, I think, I don't know what it's really telling us. I mean, they're not bad, they're just, I think the next ones are awesome. I do think, eight, do we want to clarify it a little bit? Or is the general public going to know for, I mean, because we asked them in there about building and permit process. I think most people know what that is. When it comes to planning and engineering, do we want, are we talking about for the town planning and engineering or individual when they need it? I'm just wondering, just again, to help out our residents, do we need to clarify for question eight?
Do you want me to put, like, in parentheses, kind of examples of what they may have used it for?
Yes, I think, that was my suggestion. If somebody's reading it, they may not know what exactly we have in mind. Again, I think the questions are awesome. I just, let me go through here. I had a couple other little comments, and then my other-
So for number eight, I think we're talking about what Tim Barbeau used to do and what R.A. Smith and what Rebecca's now providing us with.
Correct. I'll put some actual examples in there. If people haven't used it, they can just not, you know, NA on that one.
Question 13, regarding the question regarding reviewing service options, which includes optional up-the-drive collection. How do you feel about paying an additional fee if that option were offered? We already have that. I guess I would probably word it a little differently.
So right now, the up-the-drive is part of our contract. If we were to do a contract for just garbage at the edge of the driveway, the individual would then have to pay their own additional fee, so you want it to be more-
Just a little clarity in the fact that
I agree.
Change the, yeah, I mean, if it's a-
Unfortunately, like, the garbage contracts, the way that they're going is-
Oh, yeah, that'll go away at some point.
Yes.
I mean, I, I got to imagine, hopefully not in the very near future. I got to imagine at some point, there, I mean, it's just going to be, you're not even going to be able to pay for it, right? It's just, they're all going to be automatic trucks, they're all going to have to be at the end of the driveway.
And that's, that's the thing, the automatic trucks are, are saving them, you know, money in terms of not having a person hoof all this garbage.
The bigger challenge is how they're going to serve some of the lake lanes and stuff with their big trucks, so
Right.
we'll have to cross that bridge when we get there.
So maybe something along the lines of, you know, currently, up-the-drive service is included. It may move to an optional additional fee. Is that something you'd consider? You know, I don't, it may not be exactly that, but like-
Sure, I'll bring something back.
We got to put in here that it's, you do have it right now.
Right.
But it may go away.
I will, I'll bring something back to the next one, next meeting, but, but yeah, let's, let's keep going. Anything else?
Yeah, from 14, 14? I know we talked about this already, but two, but, and maybe, maybe you made an amendment on it, too, but I just think we just need to make it clear, because I know we've got a contingent of town people that get it a lot, understand the skate park, but everybody does. So maybe once these funds are spent, maybe we lay it out a little better.
Better options.
We say, how should the town move forward, question mark, and give them options? Use town funds to continue maintaining? Next one, seek private donations to keep the skate park? Three, tear down the skate park? I'm just, I'm just not, I'm just throwing this out, again, this is brainstorming. And then maybe give them an example and replace with parking, playset, pickleball. I mean, these are just, I don't know what anybody else thinks, but I think we need to spell it out a little bit. Otherwise, I think people might read it and just say, sure, just use town funds, but not really understand the big picture of it. So I don't know what's anybody else think about that question.
I mean, I don't necessarily disagree with you. It's, I'm not sure how you're going to, how we can word that into a-
I'll give it a whirl.
Yeah.
I just gave me, I gave three options, and maybe, maybe those aren't perfect, but at least they know then just what the option is.
Hard one to capture, right? Like, if you, should we tear down or whatever?
I don't even know you put the $6,000 in there. I just think you say that, you know, the skate park is coming to end of life, and the town has no more money budgeted to maintain the skate park. You know, like, $6,000 isn't going to get you much to fix it, and you know-
Sheets, actually, very expensive sheets.
You know, it's-
Yeah. Okay, so remove the monetary.
Yeah, like, what does the future of the skate park look like? Did we try to maintain the skate park with, you know, or do we?
Very good.
Something else.
I think, I mean, I like to err on the side of simplicity. And so maybe something of, like, what's the priority after funds are depleted? Raise money to maintain, look for other options. Right? I, you know, I think that the simplicity of, like, if you try to get to here's 17 options, and if you select A, you get to B, and, you know, like, I think if we get the general gist of people's opinions on, hey, this is important, we'd like to maintain it, or no, it's not important, and I don't care what you do with it, it gives us a little easier path to follow of, well, then let's find how we're going to maintain it, or great, nobody seems to care. We'll move on.
Okay.
I, I, I think in a, in a general, the question on here, I believe, will, for any of these things, will spark anybody who's passionate about these particular items to pick up the phone and be like, what do you mean the skate park's going to go away? Or what, right? So, you know, I mean, you'll get the general response from the group of the people who are, who are going to actually respond to it, and then anybody who you've alerted enough that they're passionate about to pick up the phone.
Let us know how many calls you feel that on the skate park.
I wasn't here for it, but apparently the skate park was-
I will, I will keep track of those three guys. Yep, I will keep track.
Before I was on, that was apparently quite the knockdown, drag-out argument, so. So, yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, that, I think we all are still in agreement, but just maybe reword that question. Sixteen, maybe just, I love that, maybe just the opportunity, even, I know we have in there being a poll worker, which is more of a one-time thing, but just, people might get afraid about being on a committee. Maybe we just say helping on a committee, or just on occasion, so that they don't feel like they're signing a life away to just get more volunteers. So that one's, my comment on that one. And then seventeen, just to make sure we give them enough room to write what they want to say, potentially. I did talk about it, one of we, and I, I'm open to it, but again, but if there was, there was a couple of questions on Peewaqui Lake residents, specific questions, but I think, the more I think of it, there might be other ways to get at it. But if somebody else had an opinion on that, we could, I talked a little bit to Joe and Michelle about it, but and then my other, on the page itself, the, the actual-
Web page.
The web pa, I mean, the, the insert, I think I would just do the townofdelafield.org larger. I think there's room up there.
We, we actually can't, that's not on the agenda for discussion.
Okay, well, and I tied it, okay, so we can talk about it later, it was a part of the survey, so.
Yeah. No, I didn't, that's not an agenda item.
So you just send it for us to peek at, we can talk to individually?
Yep.
Okay, I'll do that after.
So you got some good feedback on how to move with the survey, and you'll bring in?
Yes, I'll bring another one back at the next meeting.
Perfect.
I might have to bring back a couple iterations of number 14 for the skate park.
Sure.
Okay, good.
Item 10, new business. Consideration of an intergovernmental agreement between the Town of Delafield and Waukesha County regarding the municipal recycling dividend program.
So I have a four-page letter that I put on your desk that was not part of the packet that I'd like to read for those that are watching from home. I'm not going to read the entire thing, but I'll give you the gist of it as to what I've, I need to add to the conversation. So back in 1990, I went through our minutes because the Waukesha County Recycling Department indicated that we had entered into an agreement that we could not get out of, and I wanted to make sure that that was real. So I did find our minutes from May through July of 1990 and did quote them in here, indicating that, to summarize, that our attorney at the time, Schmuss, said that the town had no recourse but to accept the county's recycling resolution and accept a contract when it becomes available. So they kind of, from what I understand, felt strong-armed at the time to enter into this agreement where Waukesha County would be our responsible unit as far as recycling is concerned. So then, in 2014, is kind of when the city of Milwaukee and Waukesha County started talking about this agreement, because they were building their MRF, their material recycling facility. And then, at the same time, Attorney General J.B. Van Hollen was talking about how there is no ability for anybody to leave this responsible unit agreement. Once you're in it, there's no exit. There's a bunch of footnotes. I put some comments in here. When I looked at the statute, 287.09, par. 1, par. D, it didn't make it really clear that you couldn't leave, like, in our case, you couldn't leave Waukesha County. It just said you, that once you have an RU, you have to keep an RU. So there's always a possibility that somebody else could be the responsible unit instead of Waukesha County. But that's just a new idea right now. This is still being fleshed out by most of the communities that are in the RU in Waukesha County, including large cities like the city of Waukesha, city of Brookfield. I would also need to confirm this understanding with Eric, because at the time that I reached out to Eric, I did not know that we had entered into this 1990 agreement at that time. I have a couple of other things in here about Waukesha County adopting certain articles and sections. I did want to put in here, in 2019, the county basically slowed and stopped our municipal dividends program. We were getting between, or, you know, roughly around $40,000 back from. So what would happen is the state would give the county money, and then the county would kind of disperse that money through the municipalities. And in 2019, it dropped from $47,000 down to $13,500, and then they cut it off altogether. So the money that the state was giving the county, they weren't giving back to us anymore. At the time, the municipalities, from what I understand, were very upset because the only value benefit they thought that they were getting was the educational piece, pamphlets, recycling information. There wasn't actually any tangible product that was being achieved by giving, or letting the county keep all this money. So apparently, the county had established a recycling dividend work group to talk about this frustration. And that's when they ended up coming, coming up with their first intergovernmental agreement that took effect in January of 2023 and then goes to 2030. So we did sign on to that intergovernmental agreement at that time. Then the fire destroyed the MRF in Milwaukee, and Waukesha County was forced to put out requests for a new recycling processing center. So they ended up signing with Waste Management in Germantown. But then they needed to redo their IGA. So they did have many changes in the IGA, including the processing fees. On the packet that, that is in front of everybody, they have a cost estimate showing that in 10 years, they're projecting a $2.1 million loss in this program. They're also saying that they are not going to be doing dividends, essentially, but they're saying they're not doing tipping fees either, at least for the next 10 years, because they want to use a fund balance instead. When you go through the numbers, you kind of wonder why, if, when they say they're going to use a fund balance instead, is there an option in there for them to just push that cost into the municipalities in some sort of, you know, like, say, an invoice, and basically have us pay for that $2.1 million loss, which is what it's going toward? The level, oh, go ahead.
And when you say us, you mean all of the 25 municipalities that are
Right.
Right, right, not like
Right.
Town of Delafield's not getting it.
I would think it would be proportionate to the, you know, your, your population and so forth, but it's not, it's not that clear to me, or it's not written out that clearly to me, anyway. There is no additional services for all of these additional costs that are coming up. And apparently, when some of these larger communities asked Waukesha County if they were reducing any of their needs, they told them basically, don't ask that, and we're not going to reduce staff or anything. They're going to reassign staff to other things, but keep everybody on. So they were more involved with the MRF in Milwaukee. Now they're less involved with the Germantown facility, but they're not adjusting their staff accordingly. We can't get out of the RU, but we don't have to sign the new IGA, which is one of the options that Eric had listed in his letter. The county has stated that if you don't sign the new IGA, that you won't get any dividends, and you would still be subject to possible tipping fees. But based on their projection, they're not going to give dividends anyway, so it's not really a good threat, I guess. It's disheartening that we are forced to participate in a program that isn't working and is showing the next 10 years to be in a $2.1 million deficit, and we have no way to get out. My recommendation would be to not sign the current IGA and to maintain the last version that we had. I'd like to see what some of these larger communities are going to propose. If Waukesha County might not be the only RU, if somebody else offers to be an RU because they can handle the capacity or whatnot, we might be able to get on board with them. If we have residents and elected officials who contact state legislatures and say that state statute needs to be changed, because now we are not benefiting the local taxpayer by staying in this program, and it's, the program itself is failing, and we can't get out. I mean, there's, there's a lot of still-moving parts, which is why I didn't give this to you until today, because even I was still learning stuff about it. But the overall comparison is on the last page. If anybody at home wants to see this, feel free to email me, and I'll send it to you. But I just don't see the benefit of this new IGA, and I know there's a lot of other communities that do. Some of the communities that are not in favor of this have indicated to me that they're likely going to sign it at some point, because there is no other option. But right now, I'd like to just wait and see what, what everybody else is going to do. So that's what I have for you.
Because right now, we have an IGA that's good till January 1st, 2030.
2030.
And there's no, like, deadline for us to sign this, is there?
Well, they gave us a deadline of October 20th, but they never gave us notice of them wanting to do a new agreement. So that actually goes against the prior agreement, because they're supposed to give notice and do certain things, and they just didn't. So they rushed and put this agreement in front of people and said, you need to sign this back till October 20th, and so we, we don't have to. I know that Eric put in there that we could negotiate a different contract, but I don't know if they would be willing to do that with all 25 municipalities. So any questions about that, or anything for me, before you discuss?
Doesn't sound like it's going to be detrimental if we don't do anything.
Not right now. The county could say that they're not going to service anybody who doesn't sign on to the contract, but they haven't said that so far. I don't know if they can, if because they're our responsible unit.
Right.
Exactly. Services for what?
You're, we have a contract with GFL to collect. GFL has the obligation to deposit.
I'm really, really struggling with trying to figure out what they're doing with the money.
I mean, I'm sure developing and implementing a recycling program in 1990 may have been important, but it's been developed and implemented.
If all the RU does is provide, provide training materials and pamphlets and reports to the state.
ChatGPT could do that, no?
I mean, really, ChatGPT could do that. But without having an out based on that state statute, we really are kind of stuck.
So wait and see is what you're recommending?
Yeah, so, yeah, I'd like to see what some of these larger communities do, if they can find any loopholes like that one that might be.
Is there any talk that, since there's so many, you know, municipalities in the same situation, you referenced it, that we can work to higher levels in state legislature to see? Help us out here, state.
I don't know who's going to take the lead on that. I'm pretty annoyed with this, but I'm also new to the table, generally speaking, since this has been, like, going on since the MRF burned down. So I'm kind of hoping that someone with a little bit more background takes the lead, but if nobody does, I have no problem going to the state by myself.
So do we want to do a follow-up? So do we want to do a follow-up in six months, 12 months from now? Or do you, you want to just let us know if something's moving out there?
So I, I would prefer a motion so that what we decide is solidified.
Yeah, I would, I, I, I mean, I, I agree with Michelle's assessment of this, that there's a lot of moving pieces, lots of moving parts, lots of people involved, that, you know, at the end of the day, we're kind of small potatoes compared to some of the other bigger communities in Waukesha County. So I, I would tend to agree that we kind of take a wait-and-see approach. I would look for a motion that we take no action on the proposal that's in front of us this evening. And if anything changes or something comes that we need to bring it back or talk about it further, that we will bring it back and talk to this board further.
Well, I, I motion to take no action on the IGA in front of the town of Delafield.
And bring it back at a later date?
Back and review at a later date.
Second.
Motion second to take no action and review at a later date if new information comes available. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes five zero. Next item, item 10, new business, consideration of a revised intermunicipal agreement between the town of Delafield and Lake Country Fire and Rescue addressing the updated funding formula and amendments to existing articles. So I made some comments back in August, after our last partner meeting on August 21st, that certain municipality wasn't, you know, showing a sense of urgency or expediency as, as I had hoped. I had told people that my phone was open, nobody had talked to my phone or called me. The city thought that they would go and see what other options they could have with Western Lakes. That was all shrouded in secrecy and closed sessions, and nobody really knows where that ended up. But what I do know is there was a partner meeting that happened this morning, and Joe and Magna Lee and Michelle attended. So if Joe or Magna Lee want to give an update of kind of where things ended up this morning, and then we can kind of have a discussion after that.
Sure. So the, we got together with all the partners, the sticking point was definitely term. There was clearly some concern on commitment and whether or not we would be down this path again shortly thereafter. We seem to have landed in a place that, that will satisfy everyone as best we can. So the, around the term, which effectively means we are going to, they're, they're drafting an amendment to the IMA for this year to approve the budget, which will reflect the funding formula change, and will include a commitment to the hiring process over the next four years to add 12 firemen or firefighters. And then, in the background, as, because that can be done effectively on a, on a one-page document, so we have enough time to, for all the communities to approve it, and in time for budgetary requirements and passing budgets and everything else. And then, as that is going on, we'll also be making the, memorializing those changes inside of the larger IMA adjustment, so a new IMA agreement, and which then, as all of those changes are implemented, anticipate to execute that in early beginning of coming year, so.
Good summary.
As you say, I think I had, I think I had everything that was important.
Think of anything else really.
Yeah. Yeah, it was, it was a little back and forth to get to the point of where people felt comfortable. You know, I think, obviously, again, the, the term and, and time, and knowing that we aren't going to be going through it every year moving forward, is, was obviously the partner members' concerns, while also making sure that, you know, we can come back to our constituents and our, our presidents and say, hey, you know, we have a plan, it's going, we're not going to, this is how we avoid brownouts, this is how we get to a staff that's of the level that everyone deserves. So cautiously optimistic, think we got to everything that everybody was looking for, or everything that everybody could accept. And really just are waiting until we get the documents executed, so they'll be in touch with our.
So the funny formula change is the funny formula that was worked on with the policy forum?
Correct.
And agreed to?
Yep.
Okay. So basically, what we're doing is we're doing a one-year IMA amendment like we've done the previous few years to keep this thing going, and hopefully, we can all.
Yeah, so that, just because the.
Because of the time crunch.
Right, the, the preferred method was to do a, you know, complete new IMA agreement, but the, in the time it would take to have that document drafted and adjusted, corrected, everything, was not enough time for all the partner communities to be able to have it in hand to vote and approve a budget. And so that's unfortunately why we're still going the one-year agreement or one-year amendment to then go back to change it. But the, the points of contention were at least, I don't think anybody was popping champagne at the end of it, but at least everybody walked out and knew that we were going to be down the right path and have the, the, the number of employees hired that we need, so.
So what's the status of the drafts that we have in front of us and the terms here? Are we just not?
The, I.
Just in terms of articles?
City of Delafield said that what came back had a bunch of things that they hadn't been informed on, and they didn't agree on, and everything else. So I mean, I, what is there, I would not.
This is just kind of moot, just kind of, no, I'm just confirming, this is just kind of nothing we're doing.
I believe.
I mean, some of it, I'm sure, is going to be applicable, but not everything.
I believe the funding formula that is in there is correct.
The 602020.
But the, but the balance of it is.
Fireboard meetings and nomination of officers and.
They said, they, they identified some places where there was conflicting dates and conflicting language, which, you know, the thing's been carved up and put back together 17 billion times, so, you know, and it's just, at this point, it's, there is some, there's some technical pieces that need to be updated and corrected, but the, I think the nuts and bolts of it are, are well laid out.
Which is good news, because hopefully, that will bring a lot of clarity to everyone. So we'll see another one of these.
But not till next year.
But not till next year, so we're not, this isn't.
Yeah, what will come to us, hopefully, week two?
November 11th.
By then, at, well, what will come in front of us, like, to vote on will be by November 11th. I believe they'll have the document ready, because.
Tom from the village of Sheniqua, attorney.
Yeah, but Wales has, Wales is the first partner community to have their meeting in November, which is, I think, November 3rd, November 2nd, November 3rd.
The first Monday of November.
So, so it will be that single-page document, or page and a half, however long it ends up being, but the, but the one-year agreement will be, will be ready and done by then, and so we'll be able to have eyeballs on it by then.
Well, just even like in the articles, it talked about, you know, the elect, you know, forming the fireboard and who would serve on the fireboard, and so that was one of my questions to our chair, is are you seeking individual, or we're not even talking about that yet?
No, the fireboard's set, the fireboard's all good, and that's not really going to change the makeup of the fireboard, is my understanding. It's really just the, the voting structure of how the fireboard is going to be able to, you know, hopefully, get their business done, because right now, it's unanimous, and there was discussions about making it more of a simple majority or supermajority, so they could do things as simple as, you know, pass their minutes, which they have had challenges of doing, which is, which is frustrating for people who are volunteering their time to, to do that, so.
So they're, they're, move the governance to acceptance of six, six to one.
Okay, so.
Not to be confusing, but we are reappointing people to the fireboard and fire commission at our December meeting. That is always how it is. So we'll be talking about the amendment for the 2026 budget in the November meeting, and then we'll be appointing, or the chairman will be appointing people December, so I just want to make that clear, because you're going to be like, wow, why is this coming up? They are due January 1.
Okay.
Because December 1 is the, is the magic date that we have to pass the budget, I believe? Is that?
Yeah, so we're doing the budget stuff in the November, in our November meeting, but then the appointment stuff in December, because that's, every year, that's what it is.
Yeah, so barring any major snafus come up, should get a document, should get an X path of what, what we were intending to, whenever we got the referendum passed, and all the way, all the way back then.
No, I, I, I hope that, you know, we can continue with, with the optimism, and everybody's on board to finally get this resolved. Now, I, a lot of my frustration, you know, when I made my comments back in August, because I, I saw this happening, and I had hoped that this wasn't going to happen, and it wasn't going to get down to, you know, crunch time, and that we were going to be able to figure this out, but, you know. I got to say, though, that this is the last time that I'm going to do a one-year amendment, that we got to figure this out long-term, because this is getting old, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, the, I don't know how much we want to go down this path on it, but I mean, I, that's the, you're not, you're not alone in that opinion, for sure. You know, I, I did say, great, you know, we will get this done, because this is kind of, we have to, right, which, that was not, that's self-inflicted on, on other partners, right? So that was, that is what, it is what it is. But, you know, I think everybody wants to, specifically, and that's part of the, was part of the sticking point around the term, was that, you know, nobody want, nobody wants to have to keep doing this and then not knowing what kind of money we're asking for, not knowing, are we going to have brownout stations, not knowing what, any of that? And so no one, no one has an appetite to, to keep down this path like that, and.
Spent a lot of time with the policy forum, you know, negotiating that, that funding formula, and part of the, the sticking point on that was, you know, we got, we got to end the brownouts, and I've been very vocal about, you know, ending the brownouts and getting the staff, so, especially today on, you know, National, you know, First Responder Day. I mean, it's, it's very critical and very important, and we appreciate all the first responders out there.
Absolutely, so.
So are you looking for a motion to just take no action, or are we just, this was just discussion?
I think it's just no, no action, that they've, we provided an, an update, and we'll look to our November 11th meeting to hopefully have that one-page, you know, one-year amendment to the IMA so that we can, you know, approve everything, and at least memorialize that funding formula change that, you know, ensures that we are hiring firefighter and EMS folks to, you know, eliminate the, the brownout situation. Next item, announcements and planning items. There's a plan commission meeting next Tuesday, November 4th, 6:30 here. There will be a town board meeting on Tuesday, November 11th, where we will approve our budget and have that, hopefully, that IMA amendment for Lake Country Fire and Rescue. And then the Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board is meeting on November 19th at the Neshota Station 45.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, we are adjourned five nothing.
7:13.